Adoption of the agenda.
The Council adopted the agenda, Senator.
On my favor. Three adoption of minutes.
Three minutes to approve.
My second. On my favor. In business. One recommendation.
The Council received letters from Dawson Creek Volleyball Club and considered their request to waive the community center rental fees.
My second. Any discussion?
This is our second request from organizations from Dawson Creek. And I know that residents in Pooch participating in these groups. But I'm just gonna throw something out there. If we waived their fees, could they not come out and get us a hand of July first when we really need volunteers? As a reciprocal...
If we do one for one club, we have to do it for all.
And do you know how many clubs there are in Dawson Creek and Pooch Coopie and other areas?
If it's a Pooch Coopie club, I don't mind. But if it's a Dawson Creek club, well, then we have to do it for the club.
Can we get this for the club?
Swim club, we waived the fee because it was a dinner.
Yes.
This volleyball is a practice for two weeks, three, four weeks.
Twice a week until April.
Yeah, so it's a different circumstance. One was a one-time thing, this is ongoing for a few months.
But they also swim club also asked.
But we did.
No, it was a dinner, but they asked after something else in spring, something else.
Because the only use, the swim club only usually uses it for their dinner and their awards ceremony. Yeah.
That was a general.
Yeah. They've never used it for an extended period of time, it's usually one night.
Does the fee schedule is there for purpose? The secondary income? And where is this money going that they have to pay? It's going to the community center?
Yes.
And if the fee schedule is in place for a reason, then it's an opportunity for twice a year. I'm all for them paying the fee if they want to use this pool.
Well, we're all trying to keep it. And I agree, I mean, it's tough to be around here in the winter, right? And it's pretty nice to have the solar heat.
Okay, my take on this is how many residents are actually on the Dawson Creek volleyball club?
We asked Laura Lee Harris, I'm not sure her title with the organization, but today she said that sixty to seventy total athletes in the, in the club and about eight rural Pooch residents.
I'm struggling here because if it's sitting empty, you know what I mean? That's not what we're put there for. But yeah. You know, we can't, like you say, every group.
Oh. So, let's do a vote on lowering the fees. What are the fees at now?
The fees are set up in place for a reason, right? And they're going into the community centers. Now this is for community, you know, the grassroots, like more softballs and stuff like that.
No, it's Dawson Creek volleyball, all, all.
Yeah, but like when the fees are going into something and it's going into the facilities, what is it?
What is the money used for?
Yeah, thank you, worship. Any fees collected from the, the community center rental essentially go into, into general revenue? Any, yeah, anything pertaining to the municipality. To maybe expand a little bit on Counselor Grover's comments as well, when we brought that new fee schedule in front of Council, because we previously didn't have a full year annual, annual rental fee. The fee schedule was specifically set to not generate profit, it's to cover expenses. And those doesn't cover any costs after every, everything goes in.
Can you refresh us on janitorial services for once they're in there, what we get charged for?
Well, it's whatever the school district charges us, it changes. The charges change from week to week, or depending on how long they are and what time it is at.
When they clean it?
Yeah.
If it falls within the regular hours of the janitorial staff over there, it's minimal. If it's an evening or a weekend, again, there's an overtime call.
Will it be weekend?
Uh, no, they're, they're saying Tuesday and Thursday nights.
As long as they're out by eight o'clock, I believe.
So, they will only be open Monday and Friday evenings because the school has the literacy program in addition to other community centers? They go to two hundred and fifty? Things like that in the so the janitors not able to clean.
I think your friend Barbara's saying that when, when it originally was established, the thought behind it was that they're renting it anytime before the janitor service is done. It was an extra work, but after the period of the janitor being done, I think, correct me if I'm wrong, there's a union, they have to give you a certain amount. And we would be reimbursing the cost of the janitor service.
If it's after hours?
If it's after hours.
After the hours.
Yes, so functions like volleyball, it's already.
Or the volleyball.
No, it, it would be.
It would be within the confines of when.
Till seven thirty.
They're there.
They're only there till seven thirty. So the janitor is already still there. And she's been about working the house. I think it's different if they rent the whole entire kitchen, where the nurses are dirty, you have some more around the food and such, generally using the gym.
I'm just wondering, is there a difference between, so the fifteen hundred dollar fee? My thought is if I'm hosting something and somebody's coming and I'm charging those people to come to my event. Maybe that fifteen hundred dollar fee isn't so bad. But if I'm coaching volleyball team, or I have girl guides or Brownings, and I'm volunteering my time, and other parents or their citizens are volunteering their time. And nobody's paying.
What can they do because it's Dawson Creek volleyball?
But most of their stuff is still fundraising, they don't, it's not like dance, that's a profit. I would be curious to know if it's a profit or nonprofit organization with the coaches and stuff, are they charging those kids for that weekend? Is it a clinic that every kid is coming and paying a hundred dollars to participate in that? Or is it part of their, is it part of their club and they will have to be charging their parents and their families more money in order to cover this cost?
It's nonprofit.
It's nonprofit.
Nonprofit?
Third sentence, it's a nonprofit, it must be a student who volleyball drives, raffle, who volunteers and helps.
Like I know they do a lot of, so that's what I'm curious, is do we have a separate, a separate rental fee for kind of that for-profit or weddings or whatever? And nonprofit youth activities or senior, or anybody, organizations where people are volunteering their time for the betterment of our community? Because maybe those, those are two very different things in the health of a community. And if it's not costing us a ton, you could set those parameters up, those hours of when they have to try to be in there. And then our funds are kind of within the school district payment schedule as it is. Like, I mean, the school district's maintaining the building, they're paying the bills, and they're paying the janitorial. So really, now we pay for that. Not if it's after, not if it's, not if it's hours. So if it's something that confines of the janitorial hours, really it doesn't cost us anything to be in there. Yes and no, as long as they haven't cleaned it already. So a lot of the time the janitors, the school janitors, right, but if they know something is coming in, I know there's something coming in today in the afternoon. They don't go in at two o'clock and sweep and clean the gym.
She doesn't take one day off. I know she cleans the floors.
Does she clean that floor? So that she shouldn't have to do that about her.
The janitor cleans the floors Monday, Wednesday, Friday, before ten one dough.
So if you guys are gonna speak in the gallery, you guys need to ask us.
Sorry.
Put your hand up, because there is a no, actually no question period. So I am being very nice and letting you guys speak. So to be respectful, put your hand, okay? Anybody, anything else?
Thank you, just to maybe put it into a little bit of financial context as well. If Council does choose to levy the, the full fee, and we specifically wrote it up as a policy to give Council the option to waive it, amend it, whatever you guys want completely, I can discuss. Given the times that they've said they're looking at using it, and the amount of times, thirty-two times over the next four months, we'll say if you go forty-six bucks a night. I don't believe that covers the janitorial costs. So, some of the comments in the gallery, we'd subsidize the, even if fifteen hundred, we'd subsidize the interest rate.
So you're just saying that our overhead costs basically would not be?
Yeah, we would, we'd like to move a couple more.
So, and right now, as we said, we are per year.
It depends.
Time of month, year, or summer. Well, myself, I don't think we should be waiting, I think that, you know, nonprofit organizations, like Barbara said, they wanna come out and do volunteering for July first. I will help them in any way I can, waive the fee. But we also have to have some contract that they will build you. So, they won't come for?
Absolutely.
Do they not?
They won't come out on the floor.
They're not, they're not on the floor. You have a contract signed? So they come to, you get my sense?
Do like a contract that they come candidate in exchange for?
For free rental fees?
Or an agreement?
Because that helps the payments down to do candidate. And then we will table it. Until our contract is brought back.
Can I make a suggestion that is not a new candidate?
Or yeah, for voluntary.
For volunteering, give the community to a certain amount of time.
Community service?
Only in that candidate day, generally family time.
What about the Christmas thing?
Yeah, it was like a, like give them an offshoot or a core that they can.
Whatever, whatever all the.
Well, it's girls and boys.
Yeah, why?
Would you set a number of hours, or are you gonna leave it open-ended?
Well, how many hours do they need?
Well, you're looking at.
Twenty days.
Now how many days?
So you said thirty-two days? At two hours a day, so sixty-four hours.
Hour to hour. Is that not fair? You guys think that's fair?
I'm not trying to cut that.
Why not?
They come to us with a simple request.
Glory.
Answer to like the request is either yes or no.
I like to.
So, candidate, families are together. Maybe on holidays. And, and you know, the intent could be there, to say yes, I would be more than happy to. But in reality, the kids are gonna have no, no decision-making power, but I don't know. I, I think you're better off making a recommendation. Or requesting, would they consider? Even have a contract, like contract first, multiple years, but there has to be trust. Would you consider if we were to approve this, assisting us? And forget sixty-four. You have sixty-two and a half hours, that's it.
Sorry, that's boss, you're right, that's how I, my mentality is. Sammy, you have a question, I know you did when I saw you whispering to Chris, what is?
It's no question. I made a statement.
Okay, what's your statement?
They're not from Dawson, the majority of them, they're from Pooch, oh sorry, they're not from Pooch, most of them are from Dawson. Therefore, the likelihood of them actually coming out to help is pretty slim. We know how hard it is to get volunteers, and I doubt they're gonna show up.
I agree that they're not from Pooch, but the majority of them are in high school, so they're really, are you talking to the children?
I'm talking about anybody that would have to come and do the volunteering and, and it's Dawson Creek Volleyball Club, right, it's kids.
But then the parents.
Yeah, but you think the parents will show up?
Lana?
So to remember, and I know it's not fair, but we have the numbers of people that are from Pooch. We don't have the numbers of the people that are from rural Pooch. And it's, Pooch Coopie Community Center, but it's, it's the village of Pooch Coopie and the electoral area D Community Center sort of at the same time. So we don't have those numbers, if there's any of those kids. Now, just like high school, all of the kids from Pooch Coopie are set to go to Dawson Creek, so it makes sense that that ends up being where those clubs and things like that are. I agree with Ken, like I'm not sure about the, the volunteering time, I would love to see people volunteer, but at the same time, I don't know if we can force people to volunteer necessarily. Um, but what I'm wondering, I know. But, but what I'm wondering about is if you're going to make that deal, is there just a different financial thing where you set the time limit of when they can be there so it doesn't impact our, the budget? That they're within this, this school district timeframe of the janitorial service? Um, that maybe they, you know, they have to be outside this, this time? Or just possibly make a, a lesser, you know, a minimum amount? Where they're paying maybe not a fifteen hundred dollars, but they're paying this amount for that timeframe so that it's not, it's not costing the school, the village money.
Chris, what is your recommendation?
Talking with Sandy, Council waived the fees for, for this organization for a number of years. I'm doing whatever you guys go with, your policy.
Because they have to ask every time.
They have to ask.
Yeah, he said the policy, he said that they had to come back to you guys, like, this is gonna.
I would like to amend the motion that we waive the fees, but I don't know how you wanna word it, it's not gonna cost.
If we appreciate it if they would come out and help us with our, our, with the, at the end. We'll waive it, but.
In exchange for some volunteer.
It'd be nice if you could come out and do some volunteer time.
I'll write something up and type and send it to you, so you're safe.
Yeah, we can, you can send that.
That was for a second.
Why don't you set up with your, your fees, or you can volunteer and just attract the times towards that you can. Not maybe both of the staff and the local.
No, we have been, I guess, a lot of the time, that we have waived the fee. And that was, that's just in a.
Okay, no, I was just.
Wrong one thing, so if we would have.
So fee would.
No, I gotta shout, I'm gonna, now I have a display, it's just question.
Can I have a second there? Can I have a sec, thank you.
Number two recommendation.
All in favor?
All in favor.
I don't know, what is, what exactly is the motion now?
They're not paying the fee in exchange for help. But it's not mandatory, it's if they can.
The fees waived, but we're glad we requested some support on candidate days.
All in favor? Thank you.
Oh, God, like I said, on Facebook, we do have fun here. Reflections on the due.
The Council, the Council, lack of space in the Pooch Coopie element of this school.
Do I look like a burden? End discussion.
Have you heard anything back from the students?
Courtney, how's the half of the library unit? And, oh, you run out of your feet, you went all the way. Is it extra duties, extra, how, how's it going?
I think it's because the, um, the administration needs to give a practical library. Um, some of our programs have been more staggered because of lack of space. Um, before we were able to run two programs at once, but the label, in terms of variance, and now they can all have space. Um, the kids understand that, and parents understand that. It's just taking a, a little bit to get used to. Other than that, of course, in.
The school districts, when they came here, kind of offered, or said they were going to ask for a classroom. To be added on. I don't think a classroom is going to fit now or in the future. For one, they already have a classroom in the library. So really, they're not really giving, they'll keep that classroom, mark my words. So, really, they'll, they'll have two classrooms. And we'll only have half the library. And we will have to build on more classrooms. So the school comes to us, school district manager comes to us and says they have one hundred and fifty thousand rooms. The province has not set up to play yet. We won't probably not hear anything until March, April, May. By this time, we're getting into two twenty-one, twenty twenty-one, right? Getting to be too late. So we're having this special meeting tonight to see if anything the village can do to hurry it up along. We'd like to actually, I don't know how it's possible, how it started, and another classroom built on twice a time. But the chances of that, because they have to do their reasonable time, you know, and all that.
Um, just a question, is anyone of any students are in the school right now?
Over a hundred and twenty. So there are fewer classes?
Yeah, we only moved here this year.
There was fifty-nine like Ron said, at the very beginning of the school. They wanted to actually class all the students. Um, when we're talking one classroom, I think we should be looking at two additional classrooms. Because we gotta replace the library portion, that's one classroom. And we gotta have another classroom to grow. Well, I think the two classrooms, if they already filled, then we'd pull. I, I think they're already full, soon as they're built. With two classrooms. The two classrooms, if we built a classroom, they built a classroom, the classrooms are gonna be full. The school's gonna be to its capacity at the moment. So what? What we going through this in five years? Not in five years, no, yeah. Because if that subdivision knocks off, and then we do our rest development, we're gonna be. So what should we be looking at, four classrooms?
How many classrooms did we have in court, do you remember?
In the old school?
In the old school.
Twelve.
Yeah.
The maximum, maximum capacity, it's four hundred students at its, at its maximum. But you have to remember that every time they talk about a maximum capacity in a school, they talk about library space, computer lab space. Every ounce of space they talk about, you can see children in it. So a capacity like Pooch Coopie School, that was four, the old one, that was four hundred people in capacity. Realistically, when I went to Pooch Coopie School, it was two hundred and twenty students there, it was full. Um, it was, but it was about ten or twelve. Classrooms, it would have been standard, that's a part, now, that was the only difference, was it was, that it had a high school, so that's gym in it.
I think that you're gonna need more, more.
More and more, and eventually, we were gonna be digging up our own. Because of baseball diamond, or situated right behind there. And right now, as it sits, they have all that space for playing and not for education. Lana?
Are the subdivisions that are new and planned, or coming up and upcoming, besides saying that we have a subdivision? How many lots are in each one of those subdivisions? Because that makes a difference if it's just family dwelling and stuff, and how, and how it's.
Hundred and ten between the two Johnson subdivision, and our subdivision will be a hundred and ten more, or our subdivision is land that we have for sale, fertile.
Yeah, because, so that's what, that's what I'm thinking that, you know, you need to look, you need to look at is not just that we have subdivisions, like, how many lots, real estate, we there? I mean, I know we love the feasibility studies, but when the old school was built, we didn't, we didn't have those subdivisions, um, there, like the original. There were four classrooms built in there, with a computer lab, which is now a kind of classroom, and the library. So, you know, so looking at that, and when it was built, there was one full empty classroom, a computer lab, so that was two empty classrooms, and three classrooms that weren't at capacity, but.
But the school board are already aware.
Yeah, that's what I.
And we're coming in, we have stressed that to them, and they still come back to us with a one. Right now, as it sits, Chad and, um, Chad, um, Travis are trying to do something for us, and the treasurer's been very, very helpful. So, you know, we haven't heard back from very much they've heard from the province due to the Christmas thing. But we are trying to get our ideas figured out. Or do we hit the companies, do we ask them for accommodations, or do we? Shay?
The province is aware of the growth that Pooch has.
Oh, yeah.
Here's obviously, but of course they listen very well.
Well, you know me personally, Shay, and you know how I handle them, so.
Well, I'm pretty sure you've made awareness of that, but now with, like you said, there's a hundred and ten of our lots. Which isn't like, I'm under construction, I know we're filling up, we're there everywhere, right? And every time we build a family home, expect a family to move into it.
Family board.
Yeah, and more for younger families that are starting to move back in, um, the shadow community is basically almost, you know, they're slowly moving away, now the families are maintaining and renewing. So with that note, like the schools, as you said, if we're able to move on, we're figuring here, talk about a classroom this year, next year will be two classrooms, a year after will be four classrooms.
Yeah, they're well aware, the province is well aware.
But if you go to a, like, year, you're sure, like, this is how much, how is that built, and got built each year? And here's kind of the growth idea, so it's just facts and numbers right in front of us, like, we're not that.
Oh, yeah, see, first of all, our V C stats were all long week down this fall, and so we only have six hundred and ninety people in Pooch Coopie. Oh, yeah, see, first of all, our V C stats were all wrong down this curve, and so we only had 690 people in Puscoopy. Thanks to our C A O, who let them know, because that again, we lost money with our fair share. And there is towns that shouldn't have got the fair share of money. And there was two towns that didn't receive the proper share, fair share of money. We tried to fix that, we got shut down, um, because that's a normal. So we let V C stats know that they were wrong, and now they've corrected it. So now the school board will have the proper staff.
And I do know that the industry, the people who are just putting in the custom industry, I've heard through the
They should have, the first time the library was activated. And that all falls on the director of the school district 59 at the time.
In, at the time when we, during last summer.
Yes.
I
Before last summer.
Yeah.
When you first got, got, um, struck.
The last summer, when we did all the changes and stuff like that, they, they were aware and then the school district didn't, didn't put in a request.
Well, I'm sure everybody here, everybody, everywhere around here is aware, is just talking to the office, that, that
Oh, yeah, at V B C M.
Yeah.
Uh, we went down and you know, I don't know. We were thankful, because Chris made sure of that. And, um, we, um, told him, and he said he was more than willing to help. Now, we're waiting for the budget to come out.
So, Courtney, at Puscoopy Elementary School, and knowing the capacity in there, it is very stressful to have children all cramped up in this space. And I, I mean, you, you can imagine 30 kids stuck in a classroom and it being very low for a few days, and they're all in there. And then when they all have to go down to the gym just so that, uh, just for supervision, and it is it's tough, it's really tough. And not only have the staff and students there, then you have people coming in from the district to work with students. And we're going into any available office. We have one adult lunchroom for, I don't know how many people in the school are working.
No bathroom?
I think no mudroom.
Oh, uh, yeah.
No, we have some, we have some mudroom. But what I'm saying is, we have a community center, we have a big, there's no place for us football boots, no goats up. Uh, you know, what I mean, that's what I
Yeah, and look at the sheds that they throw, they've got a seat cam now, just to store things. And they have to put a storage area on the, in the end of the gym. It, it is unbelievable how full that school is. And I don't think of one classroom, I don't think of two classrooms is enough for that school.
Of course.
And since you work for the village, you're lying, right? I'm sorry, you, do you picture through the door? And bring those pictures back to the village, and the village will then hold you back. Their problems, uh, now is
I can't take pictures, Marlene is in the space legally.
But you end the space. Empty space. For non-entire.
I can't take pictures of the school, it's not that small.
Yeah, and there's no class, no kids, and where you can't take
You probably need permission from school district 59.
I have permission from the
Yes.
Oh, that's a catch, what do you do, isn't it? Um, Courtney, look in the future file. And is our library going to be used in the
Well, I first wanted to say, Marlene, I agree with you that by building two classrooms is with the amount of space that you are, everyone is trapped in, that Marlene, Marlene doesn't have a window. She has only one door to get out if there's a fire.
I happen to stop there when, um, kids stay at the hall.
Pardon me?
When the kids stay at the hall and I knock on the door and she opens it up and
Oh, yeah.
Down on the computer. Not allowed to invite me in, but I had heat. And Marlene moved when she was typing, was like this. And it's like, seriously?
Well, and there's the booter in the hallway, and as far as I know, legally that is expired. Hundreds legally that count, they're not supposed to be there.
I think it actually depends on, depending on the opening space.
Okay, I was just wondering, what, how I suggested
Oh, yeah, maybe, like, I know that some things are, it depends on, um, whether they're, whether they're fixed, if they're on the opening space to the doorways and stuff. The other part of that, are, who's going to talk?
I'm sorry, I'm wrong, and these guys know me. Sorry, I, yeah, that's why they
The, the other part of it is that other schools are having this issue as well, not, not as quite as capacity as we are. But things like the district helping teachers coming in, having no space and stuff like that. So as much as we want to, when we're, when we're fighting for that space, we need to also remember that if other schools are making something work with their limited capacity, the, the province is not going, that's what I mean, we are too, but the province is not going to say, we're going to give you this extra beautiful stuff.
You know their answer is?
Like, we need to kind of
Their answer is that the students will be bused to Dawson Creek and go to trauma school.
Exactly, yes.
And we don't want kids bused to Dawson Creek because for one, they're on the bus too long, when, how would they even learn? I, I mean, I grew up 36 miles over town, I got off five o'clock in the morning, caught the bus at seven, had to drive, ride to, to Lake Creek, get off the bus, do my school, get back on the bus at 3:30, go home. That was my childhood, as a, as a kid. As a teenager, I got on the bus at seven, rode the bus, didn't get home until 8:30, didn't get home until 5:30, had to do homework. That's too long of a bus trip.
And I agree with you, and that's why I was on the, on the committee. But the other part that I would say is if somehow you can rally your parents, that as much as you guys are talking to the ministry and everything as well, you really need a supportive parent community group of people that have kids in that school right now, that are willing to pound the pavement, that they are willing to go in and make those presentations. Things like I remember the school was built in 1950, I only remember that because I've presented about 15 times to Blair Exstrom at that time, to the Minister of Education, and we made those presentations, and we had every piece of historical data and growth. And besides it coming from you guys, it needs to come from a community parent group that is willing to pound the pavement and be heard.
Is there an actual class?
There is, there's a class meeting tonight, so
Are you the cousin?
No, I'm the treasurer, but, so we're going to go over to the class meeting, we got this, so we can bring this to them tonight.
I'm struggling here because Dawn and I and Rhonda, Courtney, back when we got the new school, you know, after they got the school, we got our library, uh, the school district got their gym and everything, they didn't want even hear from us. If we went and said, well, you know what I mean, we want to have this, or we want to have that, and our community said, oh, the school district will give you what's left over, you know what I mean? They did not communicate with us. Them now, they re, they are talking to us now because we're sharing the library. They need us, but I think moving forward, we got to keep our fingers in the pie for the future. Not let them push us aside, like, if we wanted to go in, let's say there was a recreation committee, and they wanted to put something in that kitchen, they would make us jump through hoops, they would, you know what I mean, you can't do that, we're doing this, but, you know, it's our community center. We initially paid for it, but they have, I looked in the building, and they remind us of that all the time. They forget about the history.
Anything, anything that's against the school law.
Within school hours.
And
And, and stuff, and it becomes school time. And keeping your fingers in the pie, I would definitely make sure, like you're saying, they won't give back that library classroom. I would be wanting that library classroom back because the reason is the village and the school, and the electoral area D gave money to the community center, which was part of the library, which was meant to be included in the school. And if you give that up, then you are giving up the reason that the council agreed to give money 10 years ago. So part of your, your agreement needs to be that, like, Courtney Oh, there is agreement already? Two years. Two years they have to have the library, and then you have, you're down here. But we don't even have a mudroom. For our wine, for us, for people to put their boots and their coats. Did they consult us as a community? I'm the resident, so Okay, I'm sorry, but I, you riled
But I, uh, well, I lost my train of I want to stress that you guys just, I don't feel, or think that you guys have it in writing, that they have to, have to give that into your, it's in the letter that they agreed to, but there's nothing that's covered here. Because there's no written agreement saying that, that I know of.
Yeah, that, well, the only thing I could say to that was, it was, like Courtney mentioned, it was a condition in the, in the letter.
If we're going to play nice.
And they agreed to it.
The board agreed to it.
And they agreed to it, and then
And we go letter back, baby, that, that's iron.
Is there, is there another sort of 18-page legal lease contract spelling that out with
But that's good faith right there. And if they all do good faith, they have that, and they have word of feeling.
All right, at the same time, I did, did Chris copy up a grant that you guys had a time, one of the, something down between 700 and 800? Wait, there is, and that pays 60%? Will fund
That, the grant says that the province will fund this up to 60%, and the federal will fund up to 40%.
So that's
Or Or to build a, a new building, you need to have two land and then, and you need, and they'll find that much. For a library. That isn't even on the discussion table.
It's just a grant for options that I
Yeah, no, we don't even have that option, we can't afford to run a library. Right now, the school pays for everything in the library. The village cannot move back, we've discussed it, it's just not, it's not
No, I was the option, you were wanting options.
Yeah.
It's a suggestion.
I know, as a librarian, I know you want a building, but it is not even part of the village, you're looking for a building, because that would be cheap.
Yeah, and that, that is
Maintenance on its liability, liability, it's just not feasible for a 700 and I need to The village pays the library, the library has a budget. The budget is the library's money. Now, if we had a building, the library budget would be higher, which would cost the village more money in the long run. That's not feasible, right? So I'm sorry, that's
Shay, is the library, isn't the library supposed to be attached to the school? Or the title to the car?
It's not the library.
No, it's not, it's not like the
Oh, I, I don't know, I'm just kind of clarifying.
How the library, like, want Dawson, have its own, it's like central school, has its own library. Okay. A regional district pays for that library. We
Well, you're right, every school right now, and they just put a pocket, had the school district 59 library, it was owned by the school district. And they all have, Puscoopy Elementary did have a library in part of the efforts to make the funds happen for the new school. It was a money-saving idea to provide the funds for the school, the library then entered, and the, the public municipal library, and the school district 59 library amalgamated, they became one, um, in an effort of that cost saving, um,
It's separate budget.
So originally in Pusco, 11 years ago, there was a Puscoopy School Library, and then was a Municipal Library, and they just kind of became
They're plural, yeah, they're
Yes, they became
You know, the way it was built was get the library and the community center built, otherwise the kids would have been bused.
And it was, it was a good argument for the village to put that in because it would save you money for years in the long run because the school district pays for all of the
Because Courtney can speak to the fact that how many actual residents in Puscoopy, other than I'm talking about actually go there on a regular basis and get a book.
You're asking off the top of my head?
Yeah, just get a book out.
And
Do they do it nightly? Do if they do, like, if they're adults there every night, you get a book out.
Probably every second night or every, like, after school, the parents will start early to pick up, it's a little doing quick, run through the library, and it's because of kids after school.
Take the kids up after school.
But then after work, the ones that don't have kids, after it is died down and kids are gone, the other ones, the, that don't have students in, will come in, will drop by after work.
And help it.
And in the evening. Um, I also wanted to say that, um, when they were done building our early school, with the position, and then school district said, okay, yes, we will build around your school, but it won't have the stadium. And that is when, correct me if I'm right, that is when the village said, okay, you know what? We will partner with you and we can build a community center slash gymnasium and share it with the school district. And an extra pod, if it was built in, pod for the library, we can do libraries like that. It's how the treaty is going to go.
All right, if you were on council at that time, you have to Let's Um, when we were at V B C M this year, the N D P government is pushing daycare, they want daycare throughout the province. Coming down the line, they're going to combine daycare into the Ministry of Education. They want to have daycares at schools. That's what they're looking at, uh, they just built a new school in Portt St. John, Maun Murray, and then the care center is built right in there. And there's a hundred million dollars out there for grants. So we are doing research to see if parents, or is it something that our community is interested in? We're still just testing waters, we and if for all the district property is going to be attached to the school. Yeah, so there isn't enough room to put on classrooms where we're talking about, give, give that village credit, do we have a, on a daycare? No, but if we offer that to the province, too, that will also give them issue. Because they're all about their little kids, and they're all about, um, babies, babies, and their female brands, social programs that they're giving out. And now, they'll, if we could get these things back, they would pay the money for this.
Shay The daycare, what, what cost of that?
It's barely $10 a day, they're 10 of them, they're income. With the, with the handicap, it would change for different Uh, Courtney? What?
Would it be active school care as well?
Well, this is talking after stages right now, it could be eight o'clock in the morning to nine o'clock in the all depending on what the adult wants to be, or outside. What's
So what would be the difference between that and the strong start that
Strong start, they
They, they quit that because it wasn't popular.
But these are like
Strong start isn't just daycare, strong start is, um, a parent to play with, so you would go in and you don't leave your children there, you would, you would play with them, so it was a community for parents and
But right now, the district is saying one classroom. And we're going to go back and say we need more than one classroom.
Three or
And a daycare.
If we get plenty of daycare, because, you know, nobody actually uses daycare, that's an only state classroom. And they did our library that way.
How about office space if you have adult down?
How about office daycare if you got all the downstairs?
Oh, Courtney.
Is there, how much property, like if you go off the opposite end of the community center, how much property space? Is that enough to fit more?
So when you drive in there?
Yeah, towards the highway.
When you drive in there, that's village property. That is our road. So the road, the road in?
No, like the, the pool space, like if you have the school and if you go towards the highway, is there enough to fit?
You have the fence. You have the fence.
Yeah.
That's the, that is the, um, school district fifty-nine, so then you have the back fence, that's school district fifty-nine. So where the road is, it now becomes the village's. Twenty plus two. Um, that becomes village property, right? So are baseball domes?
Yes.
Ours. Our soccer field, ours. There you go.
Ideally, then they should put on, in my thought, it's put on four more classrooms plus, like I know.
Where do the kids' playgrounds go? This is the issue.
No, but, but if this is the classroom and this is the.
She's taking on the west end.
I know you don't want this.
You know where the old school sat? You know where the old school sat?
Yeah.
Yeah.
Yes, go towards the highway. You could fit four more. I know that company is not, it's, the, the company that we got the original pods from is not in there anymore.
But there's pods in there. There's fifteen.
Yeah, but I'm saying.
There's pods sitting at Maumurri School. Sit here.
But I'm saying if they put them on that way, then we can have our library back, Marlene can have another brand new office.
And why are you thinking? I'll wait another year.
And that is part of it. You also need to think of student dynamics and that is a true story. In, in one more year, Marlene will no longer be needing that service of that mudroom. That office will not, will not be there because that particular program does take up a lot of space. That will then be Central. That will be losing their mudroom. They don't have one. But Central will be losing that and you will be getting your mudroom back.
Or devil's advocate, if they, the school district can't look at this, so now we've been struggling for two years because they had to use their mudroom and, and a year's time, you're going to have to move on. Don't they foresee any of this?
Well, they, they will have a plan at Central already, but this is not, this, they may already know, but, but this is not the only school that we. That is limited space. And with the teachers winning the, their Supreme Court case, that was it two years ago, except there are a lot more helping teachers in the school as well now. So before, where you didn't have a lot of learning assistance, you didn't have people coming in to do stuff. That is where you now have a lot of district teachers coming in, making small office space. So I mean, that, that's the argument there. If you talk to district staff, they're going to be definitely looking at that. They don't have to be large areas because they're usually no one, working with no one, they have five children at a time, but it definitely helps.
But is that, Ron, is that to say that that's where they're using the community picture as a one-on-one?
And it also needs. Yes.
That's, that's.
That's a little less. Yes. That is, uh, everything. Who has the glasses on? Yeah, and so one of the saying is, okay, Marlene moves on because you're going with your students. Three, four years ago, we have another student that has, needs special whatever, so then. Should that, I don't worry about the schools in town. I worry about our schools. So shouldn't we have facilities for things like that? They all can be used at one time or another for something of it. Then a mudroom.
R.
We're traveling to the school, R. There is no football. So they will use you. Yeah. Hey, Mr. Ken, you're sitting there nice and quiet, chilling, learning, um, let me have a second. Let me tell all those kinds of matters.
Well, I think, uh, I think Puscothe is the envy of the province. I really do. We're a growing community. We have incredible service in this community. Our emergency response here to this community is second to none and the envy of communities twice as much. Right? We have it all. We got a brand new school. It's built. We have an incredible situation happening between the community and the school. And many would be envious to keep doing what we're doing. And, uh, I, I think we have to celebrate as a community. Celebrate the positive things that we have going on. Do we have a need? You betcha. Well, let's, let people know we have a need. Let's have a, a, um, a public awareness campaign, a situational awareness campaign. Let's say, hey, we're growing. Look at us. Jump on board. You know, jump aboard. Be a part of the solution. Help us get to where we're going. And we work with the government, we work with the community, we work with the school board, and together, not alone, together, we'll do it. That's what I.
So. Do we do a little fun?
I'm not going to get you anywhere.
We can't even get people through things.
I, I don't think it's going to get you anywhere. I think Ken is right open for.
So we put a motion on the floor?
Yeah.
Let's start a public awareness campaign. To, to incorporate the community and the province and the school board. And we have several in the office who can really predict that stuff, don't they?
Oh, we have several. We have Alistair, Chris, we have Sammy, and we have Scott. Alistair's very good. He comes from journalism background. Chris is pretty worried. He's good. He's good though. And we get the media app started. And we got Miss Media over there.
Put you in a four-page survey there.
What are you talking about? No, I just keep them in line.
Oh, is that you? You prepped that with?
Yes.
Oh, you're boss.
I came back and prepped it.
Did you?
Yes.
And we have Mr. Fox from the Miri. That will help us anyway. If not, I gotta pop line with Fox.
Thank you. I, I kind of see things from two basic options here, but the, you know, with the school board itself. Um, we're either going to see them successfully lobbying the ministry to expand the school or they're going to get declined. Um, if they expand, we know from their conversation that, that the options are portable or permanent. So, or permanent, you know, fix, fix structure. So I think if we're going to go into a public awareness campaign, um, probably a good course of action would be for council to decide what of those, and obviously we know we want these specials, so a decline is not an option. You know, what of those two solutions that are possibly out there are preferable to council? Do we want affordable for now to maybe be able to easily adjust that for future growth? Or do we want to take a permanent solution now from the chance that by a year down the road, they might be having this conversation again? And I say that because I'm confident that the school isn't going to build in addition for us for what the population might be changing for now. Um, that's not going to happen. So we're likely looking at, you know, a couple of years, a couple of years away in terms of the funding.
Ladies, watch the video, the rest, so you'll know what's happening and, and, um, thank you for coming tonight. Where are you finding, where are you finding on the village website?
Perfect.
Thanks for coming.
Good night.
Good night.
So, yeah, so the, the public awareness campaign, I think, and I believe it was the lady here in the gallery sort of, to add to that traction and, and public momentum, as opposed to an awareness campaign, it should be a public lobbying campaign. So if council decides on what you guys want to see as that course of action, then that public campaign should be structured to add voice and momentum and we start bringing that to the ministry and those speaking as a community to say, this is the only option we will consider.
So should we actually be making a point of lowering down with the path president, the treasurer or the, the chair of the school district fifty-nine, and me, you, and, and the couple of counselors go down there and on holiday more?
Potentially. I, you know, once we have that defined, this is our solution, this is what we want to see happen, then put that lobbying machine into, into motion and keep pressing it, except nothing else.
We want it before twenty twenty-one. Like, we want it done because as it sits, our school is past today. So that means that the kids are going to be pressed now as a sector, they will be pressed to go to me. So we need a solution in place, a favorable put on to them.
And I remember something the minister said to us in that meeting at UBCM when we were on the conference call and, you know, Melissa was, was on the, he looked over at one of his assistants, said, what's the cost to do this? And the number that was thrown out there was four hundred thousand and I distinctly remember his comments were, why are we wasting our time discussing four hundred thousand? Let's do this. We're talking about an amount of money that's pocketed to the Ministry of Education, but we just got to convince them that this is what we want to see happen. And, and this was.
Okay. On the northernmost west, you don't forget, it's almost like it's a transfer there. You've got the approved school that's holding up too. And then you've got the other high schools and everything like that. So there's an hour and a half lay in between where.
Where they're standing outside breathing, Ken?
Yeah, A will be standing outside breathing, B, they don't have, actually, they're all girls cram packed in the library and for like that. And, but it still is, no matter how you look at it, there is that soft, like, we're being.
They can't go in the school.
No. Nope, they, they have that lockdown. So the only places we all have access to basically are gym. So that would be.
No, they could not, if you were not attending that school at that time, you cannot go in that building. Myself.
My career is gone, so we can't have a family in my career.
I myself, because I have no children, I could not go there. I actually have all my grandparents.
So part of that to the school district fifty-nine students that are doing the bus transfer is there ends up being a liability issue. And as soon as they go into the school and stuff, they have to have a certain amount of supervision, um, that you're going to be dealing with budgets and stuff as well. I, I'm just wondering out of curiosity, because I, I really agree with the sites of campaigns involving them and doing that. Have you amongst yourselves had that private conversation, should you know exactly how much money is in your pocket that you're willing to dish up? You need to have that in place quietly.
We can't.
But I would also like to know about.
We need to not have that kind of a meeting because it's not required under the law of any kind of meeting.
Okay, so, so even if it's not just like, like to be there, but just to have that idea, okay, what is in our budget that we could possibly, possibly come up with? And, and has there been a conversation with electoral area D?
Okay.
And do they have, uh, I, I don't even know, it's probably because I don't have to dish it, but.
Commitment?
You know, like a, a, a kind of a commitment in saying, like, if we can get this to go ahead and, and if, let's say the, it's not all sunshine and roses in the province, the first primary doesn't give us all the money we want to, and the dis, and village needs to throw in and electoral area D needs to throw in, you already know the four hundred and fifty thousand. But, but do you guys know those numbers?
Oh, yeah.
Kind of thing. Like, I think that that's important because when you're lobbying, you're taking those numbers.
I do. Chris does. This is a new council.
So, yeah, but that's what I mean. When you go lobbying, you are taking those numbers with you to lobby, right?
And that's why we're here.
Yeah.
Because you, yeah, that's. And for you guys, so now is that our turn to discuss?
Yeah, so basically go to first A and take me, that's what money is setting, and we need that, what do we do type of thing, right?
Yeah, I mean, ultimately, you never, you'll never want to offer up your.
You never want to say when you have your pocket.
It is now our turn. Sorry. Okay, so we now need to discuss what we're going to do.
Thank you. Just to maybe speak to some of those comments, I actually argue against that course of action. As it stands right now, this is the school board's issue to fix, not the municipality. If we come to the table saying, we've got four fifty, what are you guys willing to do for us? Later cards out on the table, there's no incentive for them to come up and fix their issue because we've already rejected.
But we already know, I mean, you already know what we think of our. Yeah, it's these guys building.
Yeah, yeah, the village is in stellar financial.
I'm frustrated because, you know, the mayor of Dawson Creek doesn't say to self peace, oh my God, you guys need that? How much can we put forward for that? Or how much does Crescent Park need, you know what I mean, for their classrooms?
They close down.
But what I'm saying is, the municipality doesn't, the only reason we are doing, we need our school. Tell us a municipality that doesn't have a school. Our school is a vital, vital thing in our community. So this is why we can't just sit back. Yes, we can probably get money, but. So you come up to Puscothe and you buy a house. You look over and say, hey, my kids are in that school? Not knowing that your kids are in Puscothe. You come up here to buy a house because the property taxes are a third of Dawson's. We have water, we have sewers, we have recycling. We're first to get the recycling, then Dawson, not recycling. You have all, everything that you need out here, less property tax. It takes you ten minutes to drive from Walmart to Seventeen Street, as it does Walmart to Puscothe. So saving your money, you come up to Pusco for your access. That is it. And you can't send your kids to school? Why would you move to Pusco? Why would you? Unless you're a senior and you want.
I, I agree.
But if you don't have a school, you don't really got anything, you know, do you?
And maybe if you don't have a school, you might get post office.
Your kids are riding the bus. One is going Charlie, one is going to Beverly. They're just.
They've done that one, yeah, in history. Yeah, but we've been there, done that one. We had to fight like hell to get what we did.
You know, in the summer, you see the kids out playing, you're talking, I'm going to help you out.
Skateboard, ice hockey, baseball field.
But you're not going to have those kids playing together because they're one thing to Charlie, one thing to Beverly, one thing to Crescent Park, whatever. And we want a community, we want a village, and we want a school.
Yes.
And that is very important. What I did if I draw my race is the part playing, it's nice to feel that. It's nice to feel like community.
Exactly.
And if we don't have a school, we're not going to have and see these complaining to our community or community.
Or library. You know what? It's not, sorry, it's not about the job for me. It, it's like you, it's about the kids that fell down because they're riding their bikes down the street and they come in and their knee is like totally bleeding. And they're like, my man is in town and I needed a bandage. Or one of the boys years ago was playing in the snow and he jumped in the snow and it was hard and he broke his arm. Where was he going to go in forty below? Wasn't forty below, forty-five below, right? And I sat him down, my mom was at work, so he sat in the library with a broken arm.
I usually block parents.
I know.
Resting kids out of the ditch because they got into the water.
So I mean, yes, I am a library, but yes, we, we're the heart of the library, or heart of the community. So many people, and I'm so passionate about it, so many people think that a library should be a really quiet place for just us. That's not what libraries are anymore, period. And people don't get that. I mean, there's so many more things that I want to do in our library and like keep it smaller and smaller and smaller. And it's just, it's crushing me and it's crushing my thoughts for the community and it's so frustrating.
Exactly. But it's frustrating enough. We have to fight. We have to fight because we're a little community.
Yeah.
We're nothing. We're really nothing. We're not the island.
No, no.
We're not Prince Dorf.
Programs that we could do are phenomenal because that's where the library is now, the heart of the community, whether they do this or that. It's not just a place for books. And if we could just get that out to them, but we lost basement.
Where, where, where all these services are vital and what make up our community. So, yes, we.
So, yes, we need our library, we need our school, we need our services. And, uh, simply, this is a wonderful place to be. You have a mayor, a council who thinks the way of this community has nothing but the best interest for this community. So we're going to do what's best for this community. Absolutely.
We have this on camera that our mayor is crying.
It's not the first time. I, I put my name up there. I had a defamation character against me because of this town. Don't believe me. When Booth comes to Booth, we're at the forefront, guaranteed. You guys may not agree with me. When I'm not, I'm unhappy, I may rock and diplomatic, but by God, I love this town. And I've served here for thirty years, and I'm tired of fighting with people over it because this is a nice community.
Appreciate it. Actually, um, not, no, I moved here about six, seven years ago. I had my kids, they ordered this school. Um, basically, they are happy, they are structured, they love this school. The school that they did in Dawson Creek there, they were nothing. They were having a lot of problems. They enjoy this community. It's safe, it's secure, they don't have to worry about that typical crap. That's why I like this community because we are a kind of cluster, we should be coming on that. That's why I'm like here.
We're not divided anymore. At one time, we were divided, and now we're slowly coming back to the community in which it was, it always has been.
I've seen where Booth was kind of giddy to where it's at now, and we, we just, we stood up and we're striving. You're, you're doing great, you know, and like you said, on the school note, I think teachers and everything, I don't know what they're doing in here, but my kids are so much better than what they have ever been in the others. Uh, they love life. The reason I'm here, like you said, finally, a candidate council meeting, is my kids love that library. That is their way they own, they own, they live there.
I get hugs.
They love court, you know?
Well, obviously, court is a good one.
Yeah, well, they love the teacher. I have never had people, basically, against where, you know, they enjoy. They want to get up and go to school. You know, I didn't, but I was, you know, not bad to go to school, but my kids are, and I don't say nothing about, right?
Can you talk to your neighbors and other people and, and, you know what I mean? What we discussed here, we've got a word of health, we all have to talk to our neighbors and do we do a petition? Uh, open house. You're quiet there.
I was just going to say, Sam. Sam.
What can we do to help the council? What, what can we? Can we get a lot more money, more space?
We need, we need four classrooms, we need the residents to get behind us, turn around, we, like, like Ken said.
Yeah.
We need-
So how do we do that?
I, I'd say the first step in that is for council, and it doesn't necessarily have to be council, even though we're going into an hour and a quarter here, there's some emotion coming out of me, but- I think that the first, you know, the first step is to have council consider which one of those two expand options are most desirable. Once you guys decide that, then a motion on the floor that this is the course of action the community wants to see relative to the elementary school, kick it back to us, we'll get the public awareness campaign kicked out.
That's best.
It is, yeah, yeah, and that's why I'm saying can not, you know, definitely not, you know, we've got, we're coming back into, into regular meeting schedule here. We have a meeting on the sixteenth, we have two meetings in seven days. We can certainly hold another special meeting on this topic at any time you guys want.
Well, I wanted to dial up the call, you know, to, well, we need to-
Um, I do want, I would say a hundred percent because there are so many rumors going around. Like, is it possible to, the schools don't start busing, the library is closing, are they closing that extra classroom for you guys? I think, well, somebody needs to clarify for the public and stop the rumors.
Yeah, what, what direction?
Again, I did, I told them today that we're having a special meeting, see if council will pay or not pay for what?
But not everybody's on Facebook. Not, not everybody's on Facebook, not everybody in the internet. Um, it's just clarify that.
But they don't read the mail, that's wrong, and they're not, we don't get the surveys, then.
And, and maybe for something like this, George, that might get better, I mean, you know, the mail drops. We've had okay success with it, better than some of the other ways, but, you know, the ones we've done, and a couple of others, right? It's, I guess I could definitely see the parents in town in that piece paper, you know, as, as part of that whole lobbying, public awareness campaign. Yeah. And maybe, and maybe it's a petition. I have to look into how a petition from a municipality to, you know, a- Yeah, provincial government would look, and if that's going to come across wrong, you know, just, just dot our i's across our t's.
Other places, yeah.
And I'm not sure, again, this is kind of uncharted territory for me, too, to try and bring something like that with some weight behind it up to a ministry. I mean, typically, it's just council speaking as the voice for the community, but I, I really like this idea. I think that's going to add a lot of weight to the, the proposal if we get in front of that, that minister, which we easily do. And say, "This isn't just council's direction, here's the voice of our community as well, this is what we want to see happen."
Just with my years of experience with the school, I don't think we should go with thought, I think we should go with forefront. With infrastructure, like, build. The reason why I say build is-
I didn't read my first word, I didn't read my first word.
Yeah, I thought you'd taken caps here. But if we go with mind, uh, built, stick built, things change six months down the way, as, you know what I mean? So, April, we decide, we've looked at how much one classroom is going to cost us. So we get the engineers, okay, how much is it going to cost to do two? How much is it going to cost to do four?
Building their engineers, their time, their-
And once you get one to add on the other three, it's always cheaper if we have to go with that route at the last minute. Where we're not going to get our pods.
Or it won't be cheaper because it would be school district fifty-nine's, country, or this community, would be school district fifty-nine's, like, building a school. We can't get outside sources to build on from school. It has to be-
The school district fifty-nine.
Yeah.
But they wouldn't build structure up with the-
They would do structural construction, they would do the cabinet, they would set up an admission in the middle, but it would be a contracted, um-
The company that works, you know, in the fourth, it's-
The building for the, building for the, how? Um, I'm, I'm on that, saying, what can we do? And, like, that's, would it be beneficial? We have a lot of turnaround in the school district right now, too, in the upper areas of, of management with council and as well superintendent. Would it be beneficial for any of the parents, um, to politely and respectfully, of course, be putting pressure on to our, you know, our, our cap, like, our-
School board?
Our school trustees, our school trustees and our school board, as well as our kind of facilities, and ultimately the, the superintendent and the assistant superintendent. Is that something that the community should be looking at, as concern citizens as well?
But if you figure out you're going to send email, you know, these dollars, you could do email.
So kind of send it as, uh, kind of a-
Concern citizen.
A concern citizen, like, shoot, you go, write into both parties, but, you know, kind of aim towards the school district as quickly. Then put a post office. There's a lot of turnaround. Um, the superintendent that's there at the moment is only there for a year or possibly two. Um, and, and then she's got, the last superintendent we had was only there for, you know, for two years. We don't have long-term, we have to come moments itself, at current, it's planned on retirement at some point. That's what I'm wondering, is sometimes when you know you have a high turnaround, you kind of become lax about it a little bit sometimes, too, right?
Or, or when you're coming up to retirement.
Thanks for, I, I see value in that. The only, the only thing I'd suggest with it is, again, comes back down to that group decision. In our experience doing community consultation, we send something out to the community for the community's opinion, and get the number of members of the community, time two, in terms of responses back. So if, if general members of the community are going to lobby directly to the superintendent, to the minister, the folks in, you know, in education, I think it would be important that there's a united front saying, "This is what council wants to do," I support that, that direction. Because if, you know, the ministers-
So we should ask, are you working with the PAC, like, what we're seeing?
Yeah, potentially. What, what I'm saying is if the, you know, if, if we put the minister's email address out there, let's say, as, as part of this process, and tell residents, "Email the minister, you know, that we want, your concerns, what you want to see happen with the school," his inbox is going to get everything under the sun. If council comes along with this, this is what we've, we've decided we want to see residents, if you agree with us, email the minister. Now that email inbox is going to fill up with mail after email supported through the agency.
Do you think, no, do you think the PAC has that much influence? I, I'm, I'm agreeing with it more so the higher ups that we want to.
I don't think the PAC has that much, that much influence. I think that united front parents with a united front village.
And PAC.
Yeah.
And your PAC, and your united front electoral area D, and your united front, and I, I don't think putting up the money if you don't have to. I, I think, I don't, I don't do the PAC.
But if, if the PAC is the starting point, because the PAC is already around, right? They're already-
No, they don't know. That's the thing is you guys need to clarify.
Really? I didn't even know the PAC is still running.
No, no. And what I'm saying is you guys need to clarify with the PAC for one, because I had three parents coming to me last night and this morning saying, "Are we closing?" And I was, I have no idea. So you need to, I think it would be good to-
Where is the evening for the, you know?
I don't-
That, that counter, what I said a moment, push it out to the public and-
And then they all jump to the negative.
So their minds start going along with the thinking. Sorry.
Email, sorry, court, you know, or-
It would be good to clarify what the, just cover all this, clarify what the PAC is, say, "This is what we're thinking of doing, and this is what definitely isn't going to happen." Um, keep everybody in the loop. It hasn't happened, and everybody needs to catch up.
Oh, we realize that, but like, at that camera there, that's why every single meeting has been in camera or on, on camera.
On camera, yes.
So if you have concerns, you go on that camera. You don't go on Facebook and start being negative. What now?
Yes.
Because they should know. They would have looked at the last council meeting. They would have known that we had school district fifty-nine here. We already entertained that idea with the school board. So now council is getting together to have a meeting. It's the negative stuff that needs to stop. It's never, I would, if it's going to be negative, you would see me out there, standing on the top of the roof of the village, yelling.
I, I also think it would be nice, I would think it would help if you did bring back, uh, conversations between the two.
Yeah.
I need to put away some, I'm not sure what reasons left, if you may. It would be hard on the-
That was previous council-
I know, but if you guys, if you guys thought-
That did that, because we, as town to town, were asking questions and they didn't let it. So they took question period away from us. So-
From any point, would be good then.
But this council, that other council that was previous, get for these cuts, didn't want question period. They voted me in hard there. So this council might have-
I would say council in general, not you. Council in general, it would be very nice if they brought back, uh, discussion period.
Our number one issue is that our council is approachable, and if they have a call, if they have a concern, instead of going on Facebook, give Philip a call, give one of us a call. You know, but the only issue I have with the library is that you guys had your last liaison write a letter stating that there was protocol, that you guys go through your liaison. You weren't allowed to go through. We weren't, we're not allowed to contact the library board, I wasn't. I had to go through the liaison. Today, one of your board members contacted Sandy. Now, what do you guys want to do? Do you guys want to reach out to all of us, or you want to shuffle it through liaison? We need to clarify that because I don't want any next signal. I don't want to be having any fights with guys in board because that ain't going to happen.
I'll like it.
Oh, you know exactly what I'm talking about. You know, you guys figure out if it's going to be protocol, is we move through the liaison?
Yeah.
Or any one of us can be chosen.
Okay? Yeah.
Now they know they can act when they're ready.
Appreciate it.
Well, with, um, the idea that, you know, with, um, doing more publicity and we want to keep positive, and a lot of the reason that's negative is that people don't know. Um, just on our last, you know, there, don't you have an entire volleyball team and stuff like that that keep dropping off little happy notes of what's going on and stuff like that? As the way, the way you're, you, you know, going to school and that. Now, you know, if you go and tell all the Dawson Creek parents that we're going to now drop off a hundred kids into those schools that are already jam packed and everything, they're going to like, like, Christmas tree.
So do you have?
So.
Because if I leave, they'll get the funding from all of them.
But they're all packed because they've already shut down the school.
The numbers are up for many other schools. Now, this school hasn't, doesn't have a number zone.
Oh.
So that's where our kids would be going. So we should turn, they would get more funding.
Yeah, see, my kids went to Trump, and that's why I love Booth so much.
So there might be a challenge. School is not closing down. It's a brand new school, it's a brand new facility, and we're getting that a school is in no way, shape, or form closing down. Now, what's happening possibly is that new students moving in would be, would be blessing, which is what Lorraine was talking about, with different, would kill children in the same community, going to schools in different, in different communities. So the school is, is not closing down. I agree with your, your camera that anybody can go on and watch. Adults, like children, everybody else who do not seek out information as a general whole of the public. So I like that, you know, lobbying, when we're saying, when Courtney's saying, "Need to tell people and give it to them." And Lorraine, you're saying, "Well, they can find out that information." Ninety percent of the people will not seek out that information.
I mean, it's wrong. That's probably the reason I thought the village is because I was on the computer.
Yeah, it's wrong. But that's what I mean. That's why I think the lobbying thing, if we want people to know, you need to push it to them. You can't expect it to come in. It just won't.
Do you know if we have a newsletter? Have you seen the newsletter come out in the middle of August?
Yes, uh, I, it, I'm periodic, we might get the message.
Okay. What do you think is the way we should communicate?
No, I think all the stuff you have is good, but like Purdy said, there's some people aren't on Facebook, some people aren't on this, some people aren't on that. I'm just making sure that we have all our ways of communicating covered to have successful, I mean, that's the only way.
Yeah, but are we missing something?
I, I don't know. That's what I was just asking. Are, are we, like?
Sam, what do you think?
Can't, I think we're going to hear the last meeting.
That's what YouTube, yeah.
Yeah, I can have some graphics and stuff.
Or unbox something.
It just has to be, it just has to be multifaceted, and I can't be too much, it just has to be multifaceted because we're doing so many different things.
But how are we going to get that information out?
And, well, oh, you've got your Facebook. You guys, I don't know if you use Twitter, I'm, I'm doing all that on Twitter. So-
Facebook and our website.
So you use Facebook, you use your website, you're using your mail out, and that's it.
Mail drops.
A mail address is that people do not read. So if you can send out a paragraph, there is no point in sending out a paragraph. If you want to send out some good graphics, you want to send out some good bulletins on it, they really just need some meat and potatoes of what is going on. They are not going to spend more than one minute reading any flyer, any Facebook post, or anything that you send out. They won't bother. And it's a shame, but it's a fact.
And that, I think that's what's happening with our newsletter. And you want to go in and lobby, if we want to be meaningful.
No, that's not what she needs.
Really, you're not a good job, Barbie.
I know where you're going, you're looking for the trash.
You're looking for the, you're looking for the shirt, or-
That is kind of, that's not what she needs. She needs, you can write, do an article. You don't read the, you know, half the second sentence. So when you get a good book in Carl Lofton Bay, yeah.
You're right.
And half put it down.
I read a whole one today. I work.
Well, Facebook is a good way, but the only way that we're seeing it is it's like, what's happening on Booths. Now, the problem is, as soon as I read what's happening on Booths, I, first thing I think is, what the, eh, Dawson Creek? But I already got a negative pretense when I, I look at that. Is there anything we can set up a new site that gives more- Is there anything we can set up a new site that gives more?
The new is called Village Boosooey.
Yeah, nobody, I don't know, actually, that's where.
Miscommunication, right?
Yeah, but it's just, you know, it's, when you first approach it, like when you first open your book, like if it ain't gonna be, like if you read it as a negative sense, you're gonna put that into it. But everybody goes to what the F Dawson Creek or what the F Boos or what Happening Boosooey, they all, the great there is almost like a negative.
But generally, when you hear from me, if you hear from me, you're gonna hear me, you're gonna hear me knock on the door. You're gonna hear me. That one, what's happening in Boosooey, if you read it positively.
I know, but it's that the person's already has that mentality in their head that it's gonna be negative, I know it's positive, well, like, I can read it as positive, but you've already.
If there's a special meeting in Boosooey and it's gonna be negative shit, believe me, I would have had a comment, "Residents, be aware, this is what's happening, this is not a good thing, pay attention."
I'll just try to figure out a way to bolster our community, like, you know, intense here, making sure that we have the correct law meeting and everything like that, you know? Just, just kind of putting everything in, just running like a, you know, a unit type deal. Now, if that means, you know, starting up an actual, you know, high visual effects, maybe we can put some firework, uh, digital background, it's gonna be.
Oh, and act, you want.
You know, and you want the kids' attention, I just get a singing hamster and the kids are all over that. Like, it's just what it is nowadays.
All right, so, there you go, there's the idea, right? Who in, outside of Northern DC has heard of Booscooey?
Unless we were in our coach, then I go, well.
No, they gotta Google it every time, I'm like, I live in Boos and they're like forty or something.
You know, really off the wall, throw something out there that would give somebody a challenge, something different. I mean, the promotion of a school and a community is, in and of itself, is a wonderful cause. But why not, why not approach a company like Budweiser? They make the best commercials and say.
You don't have a Gossers?
No, let's do it.
We don't want beer or money.
Yeah, you can, you can have a get a doggo.
Just an example.
No, nothing to do with beer, right? Let them promote, let them come up with a commercial that promotes community and school. They've got the technology, they do.
I know they got the technology, we have to find a company that does biographics with. I would like, I would like to propose a motion that we had a public tee for our residents to meet council about in March. We can stay where we are with the school, take their.
That's until September.
Okay?
February.
Have it here because we don't need the community center. We're gonna get few people come, the ones that care and it'd be more intimate when you hear what they have to say. That's my sense. They said for four people in your part, well, if we do, good for us, if we're shoulder to shoulder, good for us. Oh, wrong.
Shay said, is it possible then for a one first step that I could do? To make a, a small infographic, you can do it on Photoshop, you can do it on Word, you can do it on PowerPoint, have them take, turn it into a PDF simply by taking a screenshot on a map, then all of a sudden, or not a PDF, but a JPEG, post your picture.
Oh, woo.
Are you taking a screenshot, right? I'm standing at the computer rack, so you can do beautiful things on, on, on Pinterest, I have no idea how to do it on a, on a damn PC, but, you know? Option Shift four and you take your screenshot of whatever you've got, and there you've got a picture. And if it's a beautiful infographic that has an invitation to please like the Village of Boosooey page. Step one, all those people, Lorraine shares it on What's Happening in Boosooey. Step one, now you've seen, I would say that the, the letter that we took the picture of really was not very visually appealing. It didn't make you want to stop and look at it on screen. Lots of people did read it, but you know, that's just the one step. How can, how can we make that more positive, get people to like the Village of Boosooey page? How do you do that? Make color, it doesn't have to be anything, just, did you know? Had it, had it there and done it, put in like a picture because you took a screenshot of a PowerPoint option. And is he, and is he under thirty?
Oh, yeah.
Okay, then he knows exactly how to do it.
And if not, well, we can't argue.
No, no, usually he's far better than I am.
A hundred percent, because I also think that that's where it gets you guys more approachable. You guys need to, you need to open a conversation, people are scared of you.
Me?
And everybody's scary. No, not you.
Everybody is scared.
I have more people talking to me in the store as usual again.
I have, every people in the village, how many phone calls do you get asking there?
I don't get any.
Exactly, everybody thinks I'm, I'm approachable. Rhonda, I know since she was a kid, so she feels that she can talk to me. But Sam, if you saw me on the street, would I be approachable to you?
I wouldn't.
Watching people say to me, "They're scary to me," because the way I stand, the way I walk, the way. You better rep the bitch. I won't take any crap, is the problem.
Booscooey, you're a great old lady.
You're like a girl that loves me, I'm her best friend. Sam talks to me.
But like on this, like the website or whatever, you know, for that, show them what we have, like we got ourselves, you know, um, yeah, fraud here, we got like a solid thing going on, we got baseball diamonds, we got open fields, we got, you know, open zip boxes, show them what we have. It's like when I go and like say, I Google even Tumblr rich, they're gonna show me a bunch of kick ass pictures of the cool stuff they have, right?
Because our C A O used to work in Tumblr rich.
There you go.
Tumblr spent twenty thousand on that website.
But you don't want to go to Tumblr rich, if you don't like it.
But you can go without a website, you can do it if you're Facebook, if you're not thinking of those.
This is what Tumblr spent forty. Four hundred.
We're doing some additions, um, after that conversation with Bart to the website as these.
A hundred thousand dollars for website?
Forty.
Forty, oh, okay.
Oh, I was supposed to say, like, we're gonna set that website idea right down, right?
Let's just buy a school. I, we sent out questionnaires about, we've hired a recreational director seasonal, Alina, and he's awesome, uh, you know? But anyway, we sent out leaders, "What do you want to this community?" You know what I mean? And we hardly got any replies back.
We didn't get any replies back because there's been so much improvement in the community, you know, but you know what we're saying.
Because, you know, it'd be nice, it'd be nice forty below to maybe open the gym and just walk, walk the gym, you know what I mean, there's other.
Well, we basically, we got a mini mall. No, like, we basically got a mini mall, we've got all sorts of activity, like, we have it all here.
We don't have Charlie doll.
We don't have?
Charlie dolls.
Oh, John, uh, Mill Press.
It all went downhill a little bit.
Yes, it did.
The biggest loss of such a reward, that's why our communication gets better.
I took care of all of the kids, now Courtney's got.
When we, I mean, it wasn't this council and I am glad that you guys are ranking off because at one point the library did do job in family day, we did do job in volleyball, but we got shut down.
That's why I made that little meeting.
I know, and it's so frustrating because we want to do that, I mean, so why not let us? And then that brings everybody else in. So it's, it's frustrating when people are like, "Well, why don't you do this?" And we're like, "Well, I did." Well, why you doesn't do that there? Well, we tried, so we got shut down.
Remember our cooking class?
I know, and that got shut down because there's no reason, one was there's no, we were told there's no reason why a public, library should be promoting physical activities. We had done volleyball for families. Um, there was no reason why library should be in the kitchen teaching kids how to cook.
So why wasn't this brought to my attention when I first became mayor of corn?
Uh, because I was frustrated because everything we did got shut down. That's why I'm losing all my volunteers, because they get shut down, everything we come up for.
But you know that I have a vision, I knew me a hundred percent since they won. So this should have been brought to my attention, it should have been talked about that night when I invited you guys here to come and talk to us, to see what the village could do with you to promote you and help you. That should have been brought up to my attention and council attention, so that we can, could start going.
But it was packed in our own point fingers, you know?
Oh, okay, point fingers, not point fingers, oh, okay. But I'm very good at it.
That's probably why I was making a mess of that earlier.
Is that possible then, something that you could put Al Cameron in contact with Courtney? Because via the survey, she might have an idea of things that were utilized within the community and instead of asking them what they want, you now have a resource that can say, "This is stuff we used to be offered, this was successful, this wasn't."
But the judge has to stay in contact too, there's a problem there. We get dropped and then we have no idea what's going on.
So I was thinking like a partnership.
Yeah. We have to start working together because there's a museum this summer, fall fair, looking for kids. If we walked over two streets over and said to Courtney, "Courtney, I need six cakes for my float," he, you know what I mean, and it's not saying he's wrong, but we just all have to work together. Know that he, he was allowed, he didn't. Yeah, he doesn't, yeah, so, you know what I mean, we have to get less together with you plus the, the volunteer fire department, so that we're all comfortable with each other to reach out and do these things.
And he'd be a heck of an instructor, teach you how to cook that.
And gardening, and gardening.
Like, but there's only more shots you could have.
Well, because we did do the, the cooking classes and we did try to start up the, the gardening, um, we have volleyball net, we have volleyball balls, I have basketballs, it all got shut down because there's no reason a community and library or a public library should be promoting this one city.
This would be more or less.
Oh, yeah, I'll forget.
But it's not just a public library, is it? Like you said, aren't they?
At names.
Oh, at, okay.
They can use, as long as the kids are not, it's.
I'm a three fifty.
Oh, okay, I was, I was sure, because I thought it was tied together or such.
It's a three fifty nine library during school hours and then a public library after school hours. I mean, it's always a public library, but it's, but yeah, it can't, it can't be less than a public during school hours.
No, it's cool.
Are you guys ready to wrap up? So we, what was our date? I have, I have a motion on it. No, we just.
What's the motion? To have a tea or public thing.
But can, is there a, over the graphics of the public milk and. Public words campaign?
Public, public words campaign, so you want to do a motion or speak?
How about I just voice the intent in crisp and finesse? The intent is to have a public awareness campaign led by the community to touch the school, the community, the government and industry.
Okay? Can I get a second?
Oh, second.
Can I expand on that? Um, our next council meeting is on the sixteenth, so.
Now, how do you go with the meeting?
Uh, one, yeah, but what I was gonna say was, is from between this meeting and the next, Sammy and I allowed, and I am for that council agenda, sort of decision on what the two courses of, of expansion of. And you guys, so that gives you, you can get the, 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 the.
We have another special meeting.
Another special meeting, yeah.
So is the eight, eight, we don't have a sixteenth, we're starting. Next one's the.
The eighth, eighth, eighth.
Oh.
The agenda's deep, but.
And you're adding and make that.
And the agenda for the sixteenth isn't super vague, it's just, it's not that. And then that, that sets the stage for everything else that, that, that's up. Once, once we know the will at council in terms of that direction, we will build the community consultation piece for you guys for a total of, for a conference.
Okay, can I get a second? I don't have a second, can I get a, any discussion there, if you want to add to it? All favor? Bart, your move. I'd like to make a motion that we have a public meet and greet with our new council, what we're up to, we have school, just drop in and have tea with us or whatever, February, March. Yeah. Come, we council is going back.
We're sweethearts.
Sure, I appreciate that, we're real sweethearts.
You know, that's right, I had a date with Nikki and Wayne and I was in February.
No, 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 you had your date in December. His granddaughter date. He's more important than we are, you don't love us that much.
Granddaughters rule.
So you recommend dates with your, your foster son or your wife?
Yeah, I, I'd probably like to, uh, hold off on suggesting dates, because my wife can consult the ground.
Can I get a second for all of them?
All favor.
All favor. It lies on ten shoulders for the dates. You knew we were gonna get you for being.
No pressure.
All I ask is that you give staff at least three weeks to put this together, please.
All honor.
So where is the theme coming from?
Gotta be now.
We have to start now. But, you know, seeing as how we're talking about building the community and, and community spirit and all that stuff, I would like to throw down the gauntlet.
The gauntlet.
The gauntlet. For that, but how do I, how do I?
Your worship.
Your worship, I was gonna say your majesty.
Jesus.
Oh, my God. All right, your worship, all right? So I, I almost have to throw down this challenge to anyone in our community because I am convinced in my own mind that I make the best ribs in the whole piece. So maybe we can have a cook off or something. A, a barbecue cook off.
Not in January, I hope.
Let's do July first, everybody participate.
But that's not getting everybody together before, yeah.
I know.
She's not pretty, no work going on.
All right, I guess you didn't want to taste my ribs, huh?
No.
We can do, oh, that's, we can, we can.
Oh, you're cooking in the spring there.
We can have a.
We're all setting up at her place.
We'll bring barbecues.
Yeah, we can just get.
It's a whole town, you better make it warm and get somebody else to make it warm. Do you ever put your name in it?
There you go.
Sure, it's your. Would you do that in spring?
Yes. Yeah, I think we could do that, Miss. And we should have a trophy.
How just give a.
What, a big steak?
Big just give a mice ball. That's cool. But I was.
Yes, 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 I know, I think I apologize.
Yeah, I got a prime root, you know. So we're good, well. So, I don't.
Actually, what, like a, a skidoo project, like, you know, something in.
I am not promoting any ATV, skidoo, nothing. I am quite content if you idle through Boos. But if you're roaring around at three o'clock in the morning, I will, huh?
My dog.
I, I was just thinking, like, you gotta do some. Well, I was just thinking for the season, like you gotta do some, gotta get people together. It's cold out there. Ribs sound good, but they cook terribly at Grizzle. So what, we got an outside winter eyes.
Well, we're sure, we're already, and Donna, and Donna, Donna hosted the, the winter jamery. We all parents here for many, many years. And it's, and games outside, yeah, town show, we have blog contest, we had all kinds of things. And that's what we will be doing, isn't it? Very cool con.
So that's why can we do a big, beautiful community center. But building community, when we originally had the jamery, it wasn't in one location. You did certain thing at a parking lot here, you did something at the Legion, you did something at the church, you did something in the school gym and you did something. And so you went around to different parts and you could take place. And I mean, at that point, because we didn't have a community center, the Legion was the hub. But if you were having something like that and you're talking about community, you, you really want to have it in, like, it would just be wonderful to see it involve all of those. Because places like the seniors hall, like the Legion, they have their own volunteers as well. They're all volunteering. But if, when they come together.
That's the way it works.
Then that's pretty awesome. And, and really, when the jamery was at its best.
We're well down.
But that's the way it was always done.
And, and, you know, it's not good. It's a present. We have an end. We have an end, yeah.
And I know my money. I do the treasure.
Well, I appreciate everybody coming up tonight. I'd like to make the notion to cheer.